Okay, so call the meeting to order at 6:09. It's noteworthy that we are broadcasting from the library in Powder Mill Middle School today. Most of the committee members are here. We're socially distancing. And we apologize for the delay. We had some technical issues getting us all synchronized. So, uh, just a reminder, if you'd like to make a public comment this evening, to use the superintendent at stgrsd.org, please make sure that your name and address is in the body of the content. Otherwise, your, your comment will not be read. Next slide, please. Okay, so, um, in your packets, you should have a secretary's report dated 8/5/2020. I'll entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
So moved. Second?
Does anybody have any questions about those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 7:00. Uh, warrant articles were emailed to you guys, um, I think it was on Friday now. Uh, so if you please take the time, read them over, sign them electronically, and then return them back to Amy. That would be great. Uh, correspondence? You're not on.
Sorry. Uh, just to give you notification that, uh, we have finalized the playground. We'd like to thank everybody who made this, uh, possible. That the sewer work or the sewage situation and the actual playground has been officially completed. Uh, the final value was $458,579. And again, thank you to everybody who made this possible.
And just a reminder to the committee when we're talking this evening, please make sure you introduce yourself for those on the call so they know who, who's making what comments. Okay, moving on. Okay, it's time, it's time for our first public comment. I will ask Amy to check the superintendent email account.
Chairman Hool, I have one email in the public comment. It's from Desiree Phillips of Southwick, Mass. And she says, "I see that there are 10 substitute teacher positions open on school spring. This makes me concerned to think that we are not prepared enough for staff coverage for absenteeism and the many future quarantines. How do you plan to find the needed coverage? Also, if it wasn't safe to attend school in March when cases were low, how is it safe to attend school now during pandemic proportions?" And that is the only public comment that we have.
Oh, student advisor report. So educational presentation, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Superintendent Willard.
Thank you very much, Chairman Hool. Uh, today, I am going to be giving you an update on where we are as the, as the school district and on our reopening. Um, Amy, if you can go to the next page. So what I'm going to go over first is the enrollment numbers. I need to thank everybody in this community for filling out the enrollment forms, filling out whether you need transportation, whether you need technology. Um, I just want to share with you, uh, that we received a little over 1,400 responses. We only have about 55, uh, people that we're trying to track down, uh, to get their responses on what their, uh, plans are for the upcoming school year. We have 989 students returning in the hybrid model. We have 338 students who will be participating remotely. Uh, we had 43, uh, students withdraw that could potentially be going to a private school, uh, potentially moving. Or, um, we have had an, um, a large number of families opting for homeschooling for the upcoming school year. And again, the 55 that our principals are, um, reaching out to, to, uh, see if we can get them to let us know what their plans are for next year. If we don't hear, uh, from families, we are going to be putting you in the hybrid plan because we need to make sure that we have seats available for you if that is the model that you choose. We can always move you over to the, uh, remote model, but we want to make sure that we have a available seat for your child, uh, here, uh, for the hybrid model. So the next thing I'm going to do is go over the enrollment data by each school. So if you look at Woodland School, uh, the taller bar is the number of students who are opting for the hybrid model. And then the light blue bar next to it is the remote. Uh, I can assure you that next week, we are going to be having our building principals here. And they're going to give you a much clearer picture of what education is going to look like in their schools based on, uh, this data. Uh, what they're gonna have for class sizes, um, how is the remote option going to work? Are there going to be any other changes to it? Um, I do know that in kindergarten, you see 15 responses. Those are just families that we are aware of, that we just haven't, they haven't finished completing their enrollment packets. So we do know that those 15 students, uh, are going to be, um, somewhere in the hybrid or the remote. At Powder Mill, uh, you can see that we knew that grade six was our large, largest, uh, class at, at Powder Mill School. Um, but it's nice to see that our in-person numbers are still, uh, staying strong at 63, 64, 79, and 89. Grade four does have a larger number of, uh, families opting for the remote option. Um, and we did have, uh, some families withdraw, uh, from Powder Mill School. At about 15, I believe, families, um, withdrew their children from Powder Mill School for this upcoming school year. A Southwick Regional School is a little bit different. Um, you can see that their class sizes are, um, ranging from about 120 down to about 100. Um, we do know that grade seven is 87 to 33 and 91 to 28. So I was on the phone with Principal Tirmell today. Um, he's thinking that he might be able to, uh, really customize the remote plan and the hybrid plan, um, to provide even a better educational experience for our middle school students. And again, he will be on to share with you what it will look like next week at the regional school. Um, but it was some pretty exciting news that he shared with me today. Uh, number of students needing transportation. So as I said earlier, one of the, uh, big questions in all of this was, are we going to be able to get all of our students here? Would we have to do different tiers? Uh, the principals worked tirelessly the past two days to get me this data. They're going to be, uh, giving the data to our transportation department tomorrow so they can start drafting the bus routes. But as of right now, where we stand, um, it looks like we're only going to have to provide, uh, one tier of, of, uh, transportation for the buses. Um, so thank you for everybody who opted to drive your children to school next year. That was a huge help. And for those of you needing transportation, you will be getting your bus routes. They may look a little different because remember, we have to have, uh, less students on each bus next year. So they might not be riding with the same children that they have in the past. It might be, uh, different. It's not because we're going, we left our transportation, um, and went to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. It's simply because of the, uh, restrictions on transportation for next year. So I want to make that very clear. Um, that regardless of that the transportation department was still part of Southwick, Talon, Granville, or Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative, there would have been a different model and, uh, different restrictions going into this upcoming school year. Um, the other thing I wanted to share with you was plans for the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Districts. Agawam, Hamdou, Wilberham, Longmeadow, Ludlow, and Southwick-Talon-Granville are all doing some sort of a phased hybrid model. Uh, West Springfield and East Longmeadow are both going, uh, remote. I was on the emailing today with the, I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback in my ear. Um, I was emailing back and forth with the commissioner's assistant today and looking for more updated information on the types of plans school districts are, uh, going with. And, uh, she did tell me today that, um, about 70% of the 371 public school districts, uh, plan to offer a hybrid or a full in-person model. And 30% of districts will only offer the fully remote learning models. She also sent to me, um, it's right, if you go to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it's a list of all the school districts in Massachusetts and, uh, what type of plan they submitted to the state, uh, for their final plan. So you can go on there, uh, and, uh, see different towns and see what type of, uh, plans they submitted that they're going with. So I wanted to share that with you, that that just came out at 4:35 today. The next, uh, piece of information I want to share is the metrics. We're getting a lot of information, uh, coming to us for, at the state level about, uh, and from the governor, about types of, um, COVID cases and how many cases. And, um, why are some school districts going full remote? Why are some hybrid? What are, how come some are full in-person? Um, I've been on the phone with the Board of Health and, uh, we have a standing weekly meeting, um, to talk about the, COVID outbreaks or the COVID cases in our three towns. And the state is looking at it as well. And every Wednesday, they are going to be releasing a state map. Um, and it's going to show your school district and, uh, what's, what is the best plan that you should be, um, the DESI expectation for our learning model. Right now, our three towns are unshaded, which means that DESI's recommendation is that we come back to a full-time in-person. Or if we have extenuating circumstances, uh, you could do the hybrid. I have to tell you, one of our extenuating circumstances is transportation. We are a very large school district geographically. And, um, it's not feasible to bring all of our students back full-time because we wouldn't be able to transport them in an efficient way. So it's great that we are unshaded and it's great that we have very few cases in our, uh, three towns. But we can't provide, uh, transportation to all of our students with the restrictions that are still mandated of us on our buses. Uh, with our Board of Health, uh, she confirmed that we have one current case in Southwick, that there are zero cases of COVID in Talon and zero cases of COVID in Granville. And I also put a link on here that, uh, Amy's going to take you to. Again, transparency, this is what is released every single, uh, Wednesday. And you can go here, uh, to this website and this link. And you can look up any town that you want in Massachusetts. And it's going to tell you how many total cases that the, uh, town or city has. Um, the case count over the last 14 days, how many tests that they've given, um, the positive tests, the percent positive, and the change. Uh, so if you look at Granville, Granville has a total of 12 cases that they've had in Granville since the beginning of March. They've had zero cases over the last 14 days and they've had 45 people tested. So they have a 0% positivity rate. Um, if you keep scrolling down, you could do the same thing for Southwick and Talon. Uh, Southwick is right there, so they've had 57 total cases. Case count over the last few days is less than five because the total positive test in the last 14 days has been one person. And they've done 335 tests. And if you go to Talon, Talon has had less than five cases as a total count, uh, zero case counts and, uh, zero total positive. And they've had four people tested in the last 14 days. So I, I, I always try and go and I encourage you to look at the data, to look at the trends. Uh, Amy will bring us back to the PowerPoint. Because we are going to be monitoring the COVID-19. We are going to be, we, meeting weekly with, uh, Tammy Spencer at the Board of Health. The Chair of the School Committee, uh, sits in on these meetings. The, um, Southwick-Talon-Granville, uh, SCA rep, Union President, sits in on these meetings. Our lead nurse sits in on these meetings, Director of Curriculum Instruction, myself. And we're also going to be having, um, the, the, the Town of Southwick's, um, nurse, uh, sit in on these meetings as well. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be looking for any trends or patterns or spikes using the state metrics, uh, using this information. And we're also going to look at our surrounding communities and look to see, uh, what the trends are there. Because usually if there are trends in, uh, the surrounding communities, um, that are similar to us in size, then you can probably expect to see, um, uh, the same trend or pattern in our towns. As the Board of Health said, she's like, "It's not like there's a wall in between us and Granby, Connecticut, or us and Sandersfield." So, um, usually those trends and patterns don't just stop at the town borders. And so the last thing I wanted to do was play, um, this game because we are hearing a lot of parents, um, asking us, you know, "What if?" And so I tried to take a few of the questions that we keep, uh, hearing a lot of, that parents are asking. So the question was, "What if I wake up and I'm not feeling well? Do I need to stay home?" Well, this goes for students and this goes for our, uh, staff members. We ask you to please stay home if you have any of the symptoms listed. And below is the list of the symptoms that you should monitor your children for and staff you should monitor yourself for. Now, the question is, "I'm waking up with a stuffy nose and I, I know it's my allergies, so does that mean I have to stay home?" And the answer to that's no. Um, if you know that you have allergies and you don't have any other of the other symptoms, then you don't need to stay home. But if you have nasal congestion, a cough, and you woke up with a fever, then yes, you should be staying home. And you do need to notify, uh, the school nurse or the district lead, which is the building principal, that you are exhibiting these symptoms. And then we have certain protocols that we need to follow. And it's really important that if you do stay home, if you have any of these symptoms, that you must get a test for COVID-19 before returning to school. So if you do experience these symptoms and you do stay home, before you can return to work, you do need to get, uh, a COVID test. Another one is, "What if we have a significant number of new cases of COVID in Southwick-Talon or Granville?" Well, again, um, we're going to be working with the local Board of Health, the Department of Public Health, um, our safety team that meets with our Board of Health, and we're going to be looking, um, at those state metrics. And just so you know, that before a final decision is made on a school or district closure, I have to consult with DESI for further guidance. So I would, the Safety Committee would make a recommendation and then I would call, uh, DESI. And I would let them know that this is a spike, this is a pattern, this is a trend. We're feeling that it's in the best interest of our school district if we close. But this is the process if we do have, um, a significant number of cases in Southwick-Talon or Granville. And then, "What if someone in my child's class gets COVID? What if my child gets COVID? Who do I contact?" Except those types of questions. So I just wanted to, one more time, um, put this out. This is a live link. Um, the DESI website has the protocols in place for this, the following situations about if a student or staff tests positive for COVID. Um, what if your child or staff was in close contact with somebody outside of school who tests positive for COVID? Um, what if a student becomes symptomatic on the bus or at school? What if, um, staff is symptomatic at home or if staff is symptomatic at school? So they have a whole list of different protocols that we have to follow, uh, in order to, uh, ensure, uh, safety and, uh, ensure that we do our, uh, due diligence in communicating this to the community. I can tell you that, uh, I've had a conversation and I think the Southwick-Talon-Granville is going to be going in a more conservative route than just, uh, these protocols. Then I'll be getting, giving you the information shortly, uh, within the next week. But, um, we're really going to make sure that we do what is best, uh, for our students and for our staff. Uh, so if somebody, for example, wakes up and they are exhibiting symptoms, even though there's not a DESI protocol in place, we are going to be creating our own protocol of what to do, um, in that sort of situation. So I want to let everybody know, Amy, I think I, is it done? Oh yeah, one more thing. I just want to let everybody know that we are working tirelessly here. We're getting multiple emails and we're doing everything we can, uh, to answer them, to take a lot of the frequently asked questions, put them in an FAQ. We're looking to incorporate them into our, uh, weekly, uh, updates to the school committee and to the community. Um, a lot of the information that you have provided, uh, has been so beneficial in our planning. And another what-if is, um, I hear a lot of people concerned about substitutes. Uh, that was one of the public comments tonight. I've already shared with, uh, the school committee that we'd like to, um, keep safety at the forefront. And we don't want substitutes who are going through, uh, various school districts and then coming here for day-to-day. So we are looking at creating, uh, building-based substitutes that work only in our schools and only in specific schools. And that they come and they report on a daily basis, uh, depending on whether we need them or not. And if we don't need a sub that day, then we will, um, find, uh, different learning opportunities and supports that they can do to help our students and our teachers. But we are looking, uh, at hiring permanent subs to keep our circle small and our contacts smaller. And we're also looking at, um, alternative, uh, substitute options for some of our staff members already, uh, in our school districts and in our schools. And finally, before I leave, I know a lot of people are wondering about the extracurricular and the sports update. I do know that DESI and MIAA is going to be releasing, uh, some guidance shortly. But I do want to let you know that we, I'm going to be using the same guiding principles that I used when we opened, uh, the schools up. And the guiding principles are safety. Uh, before I put any students or coaches or bus drivers, uh, out to different communities, um, it needs to be safe to do so. Right now, um, I can, I'm monitoring the COVID rates here in Southwick-Talon and Granville. But I do know that just in Holyoke, um, they are red right now. So when I think about sports, I think about our students going into different communities and the contact tracing and trying to keep that circle small. So I want to let you know that when I make a decision on sports for this upcoming school year and different extracurriculars, um, the safety is going to be at the forefront of my decision-making. The next piece of information that is very important to me as well is equity. Um, our, as you know, our regional school where our athletes participate from is in a hybrid model. We have students who come from Springfield. We have students who live in Talon, uh, both being about a half an hour distance from our school here in Southwick. Um, in order to make our sports an equitable access for all of our students, we would need to be able to provide transportation for students in these districts to be able to participate in sports at, at the end of the school day. So I'm looking at equity, uh, when I make my decision as well. And finally, uh, just like I spoke to you about earlier, transportation. Uh, transportation, uh, is, sounds like, uh, something simple and that's easy to control. However, uh, with the restrictions on buses, uh, just sending a team to play a soccer game could require four buses. And so I have to look at that as well. And is this feasible to be doing right now? So I haven't made a decision yet. I'm going to be meeting, um, with the athletic director, I'll be meeting with the building principal. But I can tell you that these are the guiding principles that I am going to be using when making a decision about, uh, extracurriculars and sports for next year. So I just wanted to share that with you as well tonight. So I want to thank everybody. Just know that when you submit your questions or your comments to me, we read them. Um, we look at them and we do try and incorporate them and be responsive to you in our presentations that we are doing on a weekly basis. Thank you.
Does the school board have any questions for Superintendent Willard on her presentation?
I just have more of a statement to make, uh, based on what you said about the, the answering the questions that folks have, have put in. Just to remind folks again that public comment is not, uh, a, a back-and-forth scenario. And, and we get, I see a lot of questions every week and encourage you to reach out directly. As Jen is saying, she's, they're, they're answering a lot of questions and that's really the proper method, uh, to go, to go through that, to get answers.
And, and Jonathan, I just want to piggyback on that. Sometimes, uh, when people send us que- questions, we don't have the answers right now. And I know that can be frustrating as well. Um, but I try and be as honest as I can and let people know that we are working on things. But it, it's a plan in progress.
Will this presentation be put up online with the live links available?
Amy?
This is Chelsea.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So this is Pam. Um, a couple of questions, couple of comments. Um, the enrollment numbers that you presented to us thus far, um, do you have a rough estimate on generally the percentage district-wide of, um, students that opted for the, um, remote versus the, uh, hybrid?
When I did the math earlier, oh, this has been a long day. I think it was about 34% opted for the remote.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And how are you, you indicated that 55, um, are not yet selected. How are you attempting to track those families down?
So last Friday, uh, the building principals and the clerical staff reached out, uh, personally to families. Uh, I know they, some more phone calls were made today and they're gonna keep calling, um, personal contact.
Um, and I know that, um, you know, you mentioned that the principals will be with us next week. So I do have some specific questions for the principals. Um, what I'm looking for next week is, um, you know, how the information that we have has now affected their numbers, what they anticipate their class sizes to look like, um, and in the case of the regional school, um, what the cohorts look like, because I know the kids, um, change classes. Um, and the other thing that I would like to hear from the principals for next week is what the model of instruction looks like. Um, with regard to, um, who's teaching the kids when they are in, in the classroom? Who's teaching the kids when they are remote? And then who's teaching that third cohort of kids that are remote all of the time? And I know that looks different in the three buildings, so I've just kind of need a little bit of clarity on what that looks like. I also had a question earlier today about the, the state metrics map. So I'm glad that you brought that up and that you shared it with us. Um, the colors that the, are indicated, um, in the other towns, the, the green, the yellow, and red are based on a population size of 100,000. Our three towns are smaller than that, um, which is in part why we're white. We're colorless because we have less than five cases, but we're also under that 100,000. So, um, has the state explained in these small towns of less than 100,000, what our numbers need to be in order to be either yellow or red?
Yes. So they, it's a general metrics and it's on his, on the desktop from August 11th, 2020, Guidance for Districts and Schools on Interpreting the DPH COVID-19 Metrics. And it just says that while average daily cases per 100,000 over a two-week period is the metric that determines the color coding for each community, districts and schools should also monitor whether cases are increasing or decreasing compared to the prior period. So they look at that. The local positivity rate also remains an important metric to monitor. Be in consultation with your local Boards of Health. Districts should consider whether these additional metrics and underlying data may indicate other concerning trends. So what they're looking at is the, uh, unshaded is fewer than five total cases over the past 14 days. And generally, this is for communities with small populations and very few cases. So that is the metrics that they're using if you don't have the 100,000.
So I guess my question is, you know, you alluded to, like, if we have a significant number of new cases, then this is what we need to do. Well, what is our number, a significant number of new cases? We know we're good if we're less than five, but what becomes that significant number of new cases?
So again, that would be something that, um, it's a percentage and we're actually working with our Board of Health. And she is actually getting us that number. She's actually, um, Amy emailed her earlier today and she's gonna get us some more information on it. But, um, I would imagine that, um, you're going to see the percentages. Um, if you see the percentages go up probably like by a 3% increase, you're going to start to see, um, you go from the unshaded to the green or to the yellow. Um, I'm thinking about a 3% increase. I don't, I don't, it's not a large percentage increase.
Right. Okay. Well, when that number gets hammered out, I think that that would be a wise, wise metric to share. Um, and you know, you mentioned all the what-ifs. Um, and with the link to those what-ifs, it's, it's a lot of pages to read, but people should be reading it. Um, but also you mentioned that, um, we as a district want to be even more conservative. So, um, you know, I know that there needs to be more planning and more discussion about those what-ifs. And I just urge, um, administration, health officials, and the school committee, um, to really think about what we're going to do. to really think about what we're going to do when we're in the interim period waiting for test results. The what-if tells us what to do if there are symptoms and what to do if we test positive or what to do if we test negative. But really, where I think the committee is looking for a little bit more guidance is that gray area while we're waiting for those test results, testing positive or testing negative.
So if I just want to repeat it so I can give the principals the specific information. So next week, you want to know, the principals to address how they would move fluidly from the hybrid model to the remote model and under what cases and how it would happen?
Right. That, the what-if, you know, and the documentation that is provided to us by the state that tells us what to do if somebody tests or if somebody is symptomatic, basically tells us that they have to stay home and get tested and then tells us what we have to do if they test positive or if they test negative. But there's a wait time where we're waiting for test results to know whether we test positive or know whether we test negative, and it's that gray area that I'm looking for a little bit of guidance on in terms of how the schools are going to respond to that.
And there may not be guidance in the DESI protocols, but that is where we, as a school district, can come up with our own protocols that can be more conservative than what DESI suggested.
And also, related to that, how everyone who has come in contact with that person, how those people are going to be traced and contacted?
Yep. That actually is in the DESI protocols. It talks about contact tracing and if, for example, how do you contact trace at a middle school? How do you contact trace at a high school, in elementary school? Because it is different. So they do have a section on that in the DESI guidance.
And related to that, also, like, if somebody is, like, tracking the number of days that a person needs to be out, whether it be a 24-hour period, a 10-day period, a 14-day period, and like, who's cataloging this, you know, keeping track of who the individual is and when their date to return is? You know what I mean?
So I can tell you that a lot of that comes down to the Board of Health. The Board of Health does a lot of the contact tracing. They do a lot of giving you the paperwork to quarantine and whatnot. It's not necessarily not a school function, but it's bigger than the school.
And do they then communicate with the schools so that building principals know when teachers and students can come back? And is that then communicated to the teachers and the parents of that cohort?
Yes. That's why the communication and the weekly meetings and the collaboration is imperative to making this work.
And my final point is, you mentioned permanent subs, and I applaud the district for understanding the need for subs, subs that don't go to other school districts and also subs that aren't going to other schools to keep our cohorts as self-contained as possible. One thing that I would really like to see, if possible, is, you know, subbing this year is totally different than subbing has ever looked like in the past. So it's really important that if we can get these people, that they be trained in the modes of instruction that we are training our teachers in and that they are capable of using this technology, that the teachers now have to learn how to use as well.
So the plan is to hire them before the start of the school year and that they would be attending our 10 days of professional development with our teachers at the beginning of the school year. All of our paraprofessionals will be included in that as well. Thank you.
Before moving on, I just want to check the room. Any more questions in the room? Okay, Maria or Ryan, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Thank you very much for the update, and we'll be back at it next week again.
Not me.
Moving on to the next section is policies. We have two this evening. They're both first readings. If we, so we'll start with ACAB, which has to do with anti-discrimination and anti-harassment policy and grievance procedure. Does anybody have any questions about this revised policy?
So this is a long policy. Is there somebody on the policy subcommittee that wants to kind of give us a little brief summary of what has changed?
Or can we tag Jenny?
Is Jenny on here, Amy?
She's the architect. I know that.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So what sparked this change was the U.S. Department of Education's final rule on Title IX. And like, to not get bogged down into the details, and there are a lot of details, it's the first time that Title IX regulations recognize sexual harassment, including sexual assault, as unlawful sex discrimination. Prior to this, it's only addressed the issue through guidance documents, and it hasn't been legally binding. So that's kind of the first big change. It also goes a long way to protecting the rights of the respondent, so the accused, in a sexual harassment case and making sure that their rights are considered equal to the rights of the complainant or the victim. There are quite a few changes in how the policy works in terms of what we do when we have actual knowledge of a case of sexual harassment. One of the changes is that any employee of the school has an obligation to report anything that's reported to them or that they witness to a Title IX coordinator. And another big change is that both parties in the complaint need to be notified in writing that a complaint has been made before any interviews happen. So no more, you know, pull the kid aside, have a conversation, talk to some people before a formal complaint is made. We really have to jump right on the formal grievance process. There have also been some changes in people that have been assigned to be responsible for different roles in the grievance process, and that's outlined here as well, as well as some administrative tasks that we have to do in advance of any official filing of a complaint, such as posting the contact information for the Title IX coordinator to our website in a prominent space, adding some language to our code of conduct that notifies people that if they make false claims of sexual harassment to the Title IX coordinator, that there will be disciplinary action that is taken. And that language needs to be added to our handbooks and to our website. And it's just a lot of, a lot of training is going to need to happen for our staff. First of all, around the notion that anybody, any employee of the school is responsible to report any sexual harassment that they witness, and then also just around all of the changes around the procedural aspects of this, because it's very important that all procedures and timelines are followed or any respondent has a right to file a discrimination claim against us under Title IX that we didn't follow due process. I think those are the major points of this. I've attended several hours of training, and I'm working on setting up more training for administrators and faculty and staff going forward. But I think that's the basics, the basics of why we're bringing this policy forward is a change in law.
And there was that new definition, that stalking was included?
Yes, there were some definitions that changed that we had to update in our policy and that, and these all, this law went into effect, I think, on August 14th. So that's why we're kind of trying to get this before you as quickly as possible so that we can get everything into place in the event that we have a complaint.
Any questions from the school committee to Jenny or to the policy subcommittee? Okay. Let's move on to the next policy, which is EBCFA, which is face coverings. This is a brand-new policy. Any overview from the policy subcommittee?
So there was, I believe, an ad in here. Did that change get added in here from our discussion about the, this is John speaking, by the way, about the masks for all?
It was actually a deletion. The previous version had an exemption.
So it had an exemption. So I would say, I mean, from my standpoint, so that we went back and forth on that for a while, and I think we were sort of in agreement. As I've thought about it longer, I'd like to put that back in there. My belief is based on, and again, everyone's entitled to their opinions on all these things. We are going past what the state guidelines are. The school is not by any means in any district that's of major concern, as you saw, we're in the white. And I just don't know that kids that age is adding significant complexity to trying to teach them with a mask on, some of them, especially the kindergartners, just being their, potentially their first school experience. So I'm kind of, I'm in favor of putting that back in there to let that, you know, us stick with the state recommendation. I don't know how everybody feels about that, but that's kind of where, you know, as I've continued to look at the numbers and think about it, I just don't know that that's, and on top of it, we also are making this change after folks have made a decision to send their kids remote or hybrid based on initial information that they wouldn't have to. So there's definitely some concerns there, and I get that we're going to change, stuff is going to change. It's inevitable. But that's just, I'm back on the side of sticking with the state guideline there to let the kindergartners and the first graders, you know, it be recommended but not required.
So I strongly disagree with that. This is Pam. I was very relieved to see the change, the omission of the exemption of the little kids. I was very relieved to see that in this policy, we are requiring face coverings for everyone in the schools. I feel that if we do not require it for everyone, we're sort of setting a double standard. We're, and to address your, you know, comment about the numbers that are low in the state, well, the numbers are low in the state because people are doing their jobs and they're wearing their masks. And that's what's expected of us. That's what we're being told. We, as adults, are modeling for our children. I have seen children in preschools. I have seen children in day camps, all of them very comfortably wearing masks, all of them very, very, very young children. I think it's the adults that have more of a problem with the masks than the kids do. And if this is what we need to do to be safe, to keep our numbers down and to safely bring our kids back and to make our teachers and parents feel comfortable, then I think that that's absolutely what we need to do. And I'm always on the side of erring on the case of safety and precaution. I think that we are an unprecedented school district in this area in that we're the only school district that is able to essentially bring our youngest kids back full-time. This is really not a hybrid model for our woodland kids. And I've had a lot of parents reach out to me saying, you know, I'm having to make a really challenging decision here. I'm not given a hybrid situation. I'm given either a full-in or a full-out. And the only way that they're comfortable with the full-in is required masks for everybody. Is it a pain in the butt? Absolutely. Is it uncomfortable? Absolutely. But, I mean, it's, I hate to use the stupid phrase, but it's the new normal right now. And we're models, and our children follow our lead, and we should be expecting this of all ages. I also feel that, you know, the final document that went out to parents on the last day in which they had to make their decision did include this policy, did include required masks for everyone in parentheses pending school committee approval. However, later on in the document where there were FAQs, it was a little bit unclear. So we do need to go back to that document and shore it up, no matter what our decision is here. But that's my take on this one.
I'm, I kind of just want to, this is Chelsea. I kind of want to ditto Pam, and I'm thinking about, when we were kind of going back and forth at policy committee about this, I was thinking about how our youngest students are typically the germiest. But, so just thinking about having, sending them in without any masks would be, in my eyes, reckless. I think they can do it. I don't think it's asking too much, and I think that if there is an issue, we can meet the needs of the learner.
Maria or Ryan, any comment, concern, questions?
I think you guys have voiced a lot of the concerns, so I will be repeating some of the concerns that have already been out there. So I'm just going to wait and see what you guys, if Ryan has anything else to say.
Oh, I mean, I get John where you're coming from as far as it's, you know, that's definitely the pre-K and K students. It's a first-time experience for them, but then also, it's a first-time experience that they won't know the difference if they come in masks. I have a preschooler, and he does wear it outside of the house, and preparing for him to wear it at school, but that's my own, just, I want him to be safe and make sure that his teacher stays safe because I want him to keep going every day. The younger kids don't know any better if we just make it, it's the rule that they're going to school with it.
No, I totally understand. I mean, this is, you know, it's one of those things, right? It's hard to figure out. And do we know why the state guidelines were not, were put like that? We just, we don't know what, because, because I don't know why they were, that's the part, that's the part I struggled with the most, was the state saying that, you know, it was a recommended thing but not a.
Yeah, because like, what, ages two and up should be wearing it outside?
I was going to say that.
Yeah.
Now they're saying two and up, so.
But I mean, obviously, our preschoolers are three and up, so they should be in school, I guess, and outside.
Amy, can you scroll down on this document a little bit?
And, you know, I do think there are, certainly, parents on both sides of it too, though, just to say there are parents that are very concerned about sending their kids with masks on all day, specifically in those grades too. So it does, you know, it does go both ways for sure.
Oh, yeah, and I can totally see the younger grades complaining of how are they going to get any work done when the teacher has to keep reminding them to put it back on? Like, that is a valid concern.
Yeah, and I'm concerned about the teachers. That is a very difficult group to teach to begin with, but then to worry about the masks and stuff. And that's sort of where I feel like some of the state guidance probably came from, they recognized some of that challenge, but.
I had a question about when they're not wearing their mask. So Amy, you had scrolled to, it was like a list of bullet points, exceptions, yep, right there. So I see that they are not going to be required during PE classes, and I was just wondering if anybody has spoken to the PE teachers about this and what their thoughts on this are.
So that's the guidelines for PE. They have to still have the social distancing. So I think they just added that in there, but there are very specific guidelines. Again, another set of guidelines that DESI has released on specials and electives, and there's a whole section on PE in there. So there are guidelines in which they can take their masks off during PE, but there's also situations where you cannot take your mask off during PE. It's not just a blanket physical education class.
If there are links that expand on certain things such as that, can we add those links to this document? Or is that not a wise move because that information will likely change too?
Amy, can you scroll to the bottom? I don't know if they included the link on there. Amy, can you scroll to the bottom? I don't know if they included the link on there. So it might be under the reopening guidelines. It's that page, if you go to that page, they'll have a, a whole section on electives. They talk about band, they talk about music, they talk about PE and the guidelines. So if it's not that one right there, we can find it and put it in.
Okay. And Amy, can you scroll up to the violators? Yep, right there. Okay. So it looks to me like it's broken down into a couple different parts. So first of all, students who are in violation. And the way that I'm reading this is the building principal contacts, the parents should determine whether or not they should be exempt. And if not, then they would be removed from the school building for in-person learning until they can comply. So I guess my question is, during the time in which the building principal is consulting with the parents, is the student being removed from the classroom?
I can answer that, yes.
I'm not even sure this child will get into the classroom.
Exactly, yeah. They can't get into the school. They have to have a mask on to come into the school.
Okay, okay. I guess my question was like, repeat viol, like, like kids that, if, if a student is just kind of defiant and keeps taking it off while in a class, you know, would that, presumably would the principal remove that student from class and then consult a parent?
Right. You would follow the same, we would progressive discipline in our code of conduct. Always try and educate anybody first. We don't want to just go right to disciplinary action. We want to try and understand the reason why the child is not wearing the mask and see if we can, you know, talk to them and see what the issue is. If it's flat out blatant disregard for the rules, then, then it is handled as if it was any other insubordinate behavior in the school.
Only, I would hope that it would also entail removing from the class situation because it's putting other students.
They could not be in the class.
Right.
The only people who, and, and I said this in one of my previous meetings as well, if you feel that your child is one of the children who will have a medical exemption, we need to have that in place before the beginning of the school year and before your child comes to school. So I'm asking that as soon as possible, you get in contact with the building principals. They are there every day. And we will get in contact with the school nurse and the 504 coordinator so we can put a 504 medical plan in place to figure out what accommodation we can put in place for your child. So please, if you feel that your child has some sort of disability that will prevent them from wearing one, we have to figure out an accommodation that keeps everybody safe in the school.
So I have a follow-up question to that then. So the expectation is until that 504 is in place, that the student will be wearing a mask at school?
Yes, yes.
I guess I just, this is Jeff, and I just have one more comment to follow up on what you were talking about, as far as what the state has put out for guidance. I think we have to take the viewpoint of that those are the minimum requirements and that we have the obligation to do what we think is right for our towns and, and district. And it sounds like the World Committee right now is that everybody's going to wear masks. Any other questions or comments on this mask policy?
I did want to point out that some of John's concern also came from just education and how are we going to teach with masks on? And we did talk about, or we were, we, they let us know that they're, they're on it, like the teachers are on it. They're thinking about masks with windows and things like that, so that hopefully our education isn't impacted by the mask. But that was a good concern.
And, and since we're, I mean, obviously I think there's still time to change things, but just so that the, the parents out there that might, this might be a deal breaker for them, they can obviously switch. Okay.
Please, if you did vote for the hybrid and the idea of wearing a mask is not one that you feel that you can work with for kindergarten or first grade, I would ask that you contact Woodland School in the next few days. I'll have Amy put something out on Facebook as well. So we can just plan accordingly and make sure that your child is, we have the appropriate number of teachers staffing remote and in person.
Can I ask a dumb question? A face shield is not an appropriate face covering. Is that correct?
Correct. It's an accommodation.
Okay. Can you explain to people listening why a face shield is not appropriate?
Because it doesn't fully cover the nose and the mouth. The bottom part is left open. So again, these are put in plants, these are put in place to mitigate. Just wearing a mask isn't good enough. You have to put everything in conjunction. So you need the mask, you need the six feet, you need the hand height, the hygiene. All of that working together is a, a part of our safety plan. So if somebody can only wear a face mask because that is the best option medically for them, then it is an accommodation that we can make if it's a medical reason. But it's not, as Chairman Hul just said, it's not the best. So it's an accommodation. It still will help mitigate the spread of the virus, but it's not the best form to, best tool to help mitigate the spread. But it still is effective when, in conjunction with the other hand hygiene and the six feet and every other factors as well.
In the same vein that face shields have that open area, so don't, a lot of people are wearing bandanas that don't hug the chin or the face. So those are not going to be included under this face covering policy as well.
Face covering should meet the CDC guidance.
So we're using the verbiage masks or face coverings. So what face covering aside from a mask is acceptable?
What the CDC dictates, multiple layers, cloth, it's very well spelled out in the CDC guidelines on face covering.
Is that, is that wording on the policy, CDC guideline mask, face coverings? I, yeah, I can't see the top of the, oh, yeah, per CDC.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know how we go about doing it, but if we can, I think we talked about it too, if, if, if we can put out a list of the, of recommended ones, just so that there's some clarity around, you know, like a post that this is okay, this is not okay, and these are, I don't mean that we shouldn't be obviously pushing sales to somewhere.
Right.
But giving some clarity as to what is right and what's wrong.
So I have one more comment or question, I guess. So once we approve this, it's going to get posted onto the website. Do we have a COVID section that we can kind of highlight some of these other links so that it's not buried in the policy? Is that possible?
Yep. Aim, go to our website, because there's a COVID section with everything that we've put out.
Okay, hold on.
Maybe, I wanted to just make sure that he might be thinking of something different.
I know that when we release the policy, it'll go into our Policy subsection.
Yes.
So because this is COVID related, like,
Put this on our COVID page.
Correct.
Exactly, I got it, yes.
Easy as possible for all constituents involved to be able to find the information, whether it's a link to the CDC guidance on the face masks, whether it's the state guidance on face masks, let's just make it as transparent and easy accessible as possible.
So we would put them under our COVID page.
Perfect.
I point out from the last slide, it looked like you need a written note from a doctor that your, your child has, okay, just so parents are aware of that. They can't just go saying that they don't want their child to wear.
And the child isn't in school maskless until the note comes in.
That's right.
Okay, last, last call for committee questions, and then we're going to move on to action items. On the phone, Maria or Ryan, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to action items.
Move to waive the three readings of the revised policy ACAB, anti-discrimination, anti-harassment policy and grievance procedure recommended.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any questions? So just programmatically here, we are going to vote to waive the three readings so that we can get this policy immediately in place as of the vote this evening. Any questions on that? See any in the room, on the phone?
No.
No.
Okay, we will do a roll call vote to motion to waive the three readings. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, so the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to rescind policy J I C K, sexual harassment policy dash complaint procedure for students recommended.
So moved. Second.
Okay, procedurally, again, just as a reminder, this is the policy that we are replacing with ACAB. Any questions on that? Don't see any in the room. How about on the phone?
No, I'm good.
Okay, do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff is yes, so the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the revised policy ACAB, anti-discrimination, anti-harassment policy and grievance procedure recommended.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any final questions on this policy before we approve it?
No.
No.
Okay, again, we'll do a roll call vote on this, starting with Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? You're muted, just so you know. I think you're muted. Yeah, I hear you, but I hear you because you're in the room. Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes, motion passes seven zero zero. It's on the lower left.
Move to waive the three readings of the policy E B C F A, face coverings recommended.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so we are going to waive programmatically, we're going to waive the three readings tonight on face masks so we can get this into the parents' hands to fully digest and get it on our website. Any questions on this motion? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to accept the policy E B C F A, face coverings recommended.
So moved. Second.
Okay, last call for any questions or final changes to the face coverings policy. See none in the room? How about on the phone?
No.
No.
Okay, move to a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? Jonathan?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes six one zero.
Approve the allocation of $202,190 to the regional transportation reimbursement revolving account for the fiscal year 2020. Said amount being the reimbursement funds received by the South Fork Town and Granville Regional School District in excess of the budgeted fiscal year 2020 regional transportation reimbursement revenue of $900,000. Recommended.
So moved. Second.
Steve, do you want to give us a quick overview of what's going on?
I can. The, the motion is pretty self-explanatory, but this is an annual action item that the committee has taken up since the establishment of a regional transportation reimbursement revolving account that the legislature enacted, I want to say it was around, with a local option around 2012 or 2013. We budget a certain amount to be received from the state for regional transportation reimbursement. When that amount is ultimately calculated, it's usually not till about a year after we have to identify a budgeted revenue figure. And so last year, I think the excess allocation from the state was 176,000, which we parked in the revolving, transportation revolving account, which can then be used for any transportation-related expenditures, including the purchase of vehicles, paying salaries, wages, supplies, materials, contractual, contractual arrangements with transportation providers. So this year, the amount, the state reimbursed us $1,102,190. The excess was 202,000, 202,190 over the $900,000 that we had budgeted. So recommending that this also be parked in the revolving account and spent for transportation-related expenses. Most likely to be used to, as an offset against the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaboratives quarterly bills that, that they'll be sending to us.
Thank you. All right, any questions for Steve before we vote on this? Anyone on the phone?
No.
Okay, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve home education proposals HS 2021-09 through HS 2021-37, recommended.
So moved. Second.
Any questions on the home ed proposals? Lot of information there.
Good chunk of people.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to approve the home ed plans. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes seven zero zero. Okay, moving on to reports. Superintendent Wilder?
I don't have any reports at this time.
Okay, Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Presnel?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make the committee aware, our annual financial audit will be starting next Monday. We'll have auditors here on site actually for at least Monday through Wednesday and possibly beyond. So that's an early, much earlier start than we've had in recent years. So we're working hard to get everything in order for them. I also just wanted to touch briefly on the, the legis, the local aid resolution that the legislature passed recently. We talked about this at the recent Finance Subcommittee meeting. This was passed in late July. And essentially, while the legislature continues to wait for additional federal assistance so that they feel comfortable moving ahead with a state budget for fiscal year 2021, they wanted to establish a baseline for funding for school districts and, and cities and towns. They saw that as a priority. Essentially, what it does is eliminates the, the unknowns of severe funding cuts from state sources for cities, towns and, and school districts. The legislature committed to funding no less than the FY20 level of funding for Chapter 70 Education Aid. And they adjusted required local contributions for enrollment and inflation. Though, in our case, this lowers the local, required local contributions from our three communities by $337,000. From the, lowers it from the cherry sheet that, the cherry sheet data upon which our approved fiscal year 2021 budget was based. As you may recall, the School Committee committed to re-looking at the budget in the event that there were significant funding cuts from the state, because those numbers were unknown and remain unknown. At the time we, we passed the budget, they were unknown. So, but at this time, both Superintendent Willard and myself are, are recommending that the committee not consider amending the FY21 budget until new cherry sheet data is released in conjunction with the state budget approval, which we're anticipating later in this fall, October or, or November. The state is still waiting for possible additional federal assistance. And these numbers may, the required local contribution and the chapter numbers may, uh, the required local contribution and the chapter seventy numbers may, may tick back up. There also may, um, there may be reductions to the revol, to the transportation reimbursement. The three towns are responsible, because transportation is a non-discretionary assessment, they would be responsible for any, uh, shortfall that we saw in a, uh, a new cherry sheet figure for regional transportation reimbursement. So, um, while it is helpful to know that, that there was not a, a gutting, if you will, of the required local contribution and chapter seventy, and that, and having that baseline in place is, is somewhat reassuring, um, there, there are still, there is still some likelihood that those numbers will, will creep back up and, and a, uh, revised budget or amended budget won't be necessary. So I think, you know, our, our suggestion is to just sit tight for right now. Um, we can reach out to the three communities and make them, uh, fully aware of, of what, what the implications are right now and our, our, uh, for, uh, preference to, uh, wait until we have more news on an FY twenty-one state budget.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to subcommittee and liaisons. Sounds like we're going to have a social, uh, negotiations Zoom call?
Yes, negotiation Zoom call on Thursday.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee, have we nailed down a recurring date? Steve's saying no.
I apologize that, that we don't have that yet, but, um, soon.
All right, LPVAC, Pam, did you have a meeting?
Yes, um, so by the way, this is reversed, I am the board of directors, you're the board of governors. But, um, yes, we had a meeting last week, we have another one this upcoming week. Um, last week's meeting was simply to approve the, um, the plan for LPVAC moving forward. Um, we were presented with the three options, um, as all, you know, districts have to create. Um, and the, uh, vote was that, um, LPVAC would, um, begin hybrid as well. Um, but it's essentially broken down into two components, you have the CTEC students, um, and then you have the special education students. Um, and their hybrid model looks different from ours. Um, it basically in, um, involves just more in-person instruction. For the CTEC kids, um, it almost already was hybrid because they attend in grade level cohorts half of the week, or a half, a half a day anyway. So there wasn't a huge change to, um, the number of days that they were attending, um, but Wednesday is a, a completely remote day for deep building cleaning. Um, and then special education attends four days, well, there are different special education programs, but in general would attend four days a week, again with Wednesday being, um, a remote day for, um, deep remote cleaning. Um, and, uh, so again, we have a, another full meeting this upcoming week.
Okay, thank you. The Board of Governors, or the Board of Directors, sorry, Board of Governors has not met. I can't keep it straight. All right, Policy Subcommittee, uh, do you guys have another scheduled meeting? Okay. Buildings and Grounds, I saw, Steve, you had a note that you wanted to have a meeting?
We thought it might be a good idea to, uh, get together soon to talk about some of the, um, some of the things we're doing around, uh, safe opening and, uh, keeping the schools safe, uh, where we are in relation to the start of the school year, and, um, look at, look at some options that may be out there for, um, enhancing some things. So I, I don't know if there's availability for the end of this week or early next week.
Friday, the twenty-first. I could Zoom in the afternoon.
And that's which day?
Friday, the August twenty-first.
Okay, this Friday.
Yeah. You said the end of this week, right?
Yeah, if, if available, yeah, I know, we're, we're getting the short notice now.
Yeah, after two o'clock, if you, yeah, you and Eric can figure out a time, and if that doesn't work, uh, Mon, Monday, uh, between eight thirty and ten thirty.
Where is Lilo?
Okay, I'll, I'll get back to you by tomorrow morning.
And if anybody else would like to join the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee, uh, it's, we've, it's just me. I know it's another meeting, but if the other folks are interested, please let us know.
Yeah, I was going to ask, when, um, have we sent out the thing about what, uh, were we going to send something out about what was available or what wasn't available, if there was a sheet or something we were gonna? And I forget what the, I know this is usually the time of year where we.
Yes, we haven't, um, let me circle back.
I sent, I sent the sheet to everybody, but I can resend it.
No, no, it's fine, if you send it, I just.
It was, it might have been buried in one of the other emails.
Is there something else going on, I don't know?
Well, no, but there was just, uh, I was sending a lot of emails last week.
Yeah, no, I got, yeah, I got you.
I can resend it.
We need to motion to dissolve transportation.
Okay.
That's, Mr. Locke is quick on the draw on that. Uh, so our next meeting, let's put that on as an action item, we'll solve that subcommittee. And then, uh, ILT hasn't met yet, correct? And does any other subcommittee or liaison want to report out on anything?
There's a little Southwick two fifty news, as of today, we have a photo contest that's been posted to the Southwick two fifty web, uh, Facebook, and I'll put it on the website at some point. But they're looking for landscapes, places, people of Southwick, and there's some good, um, Southwick two fifty memorabilia giveaways involved, so it should be fun, something we can do virtually.
Are they selling masks?
Oh, they, oh, did we do that yet? We haven't met yet, we have a meeting in September, so maybe that'll be on the menu.
Okay, uh, moving on to our second public comment, as a reminder, uh, you need to use the superintendent email address and make sure that your name and address are clearly marked. Uh, Amy, could you check the, uh, superintendent's account, please?
Yes, um, I have a few emails here that have come in. So the first one is from Jessica Thornton, Southwick, Mass. And she says, "Thank you first to the superintendent, school committee members and all staff who have been working extra hard since March to come up with a workable and safe solution for district families, students and staff. As a parent-trained teacher and a former school administrator, I understand just how difficult a position you are all in, and I commend you for your dedication in the face of hard choices and a public looking to you for guidance. I have two questions slash comments. While it is understandable that the stakeholders and decision-makers would be inclined not to have an excessive amount of changes throughout the school year, can someone please address, discuss the decision to make the parental decision timeline all the way, go all the way until the end of January twenty twenty-one, as opposed to a more palatable two or three month commitment? Other nearby school districts have been using the beginning of November as a cutoff point in some instances for both parental choice-making and/or the entire district's virtual-only schooling start. Second, this is now the time that most parents are looking to begin or finish up their back-to-school shopping. While I know from prior meetings that a brown bag lunch is preferred versus a lunchbox, so there isn't, one isn't needed, are there any other special items of note that the school anticipates students needing or not needing for the beginning of the school year? Their own pencil box, number two pencils, masks, et cetera? If so, perhaps a list can be made available, families can begin shopping for students as well as needed extra supplies for teachers. Thank you again for your time and hard work. Sincerely, Jessica Thornton." The next comment is from Desiree Phillips, Southwick, Mass. Her comment is, "How many schools are full-time like Woodland? Woodland should not be considered a, as a hybrid model, they are going every single day." The next comment is from Ashley, I can't pronounce her last name, Racino from Granville, Mass. "Why is there no remote pre-K? We signed up, but we're informed today that this is not an option." Another public comment from Desiree Phillips, Southwick, Mass. "What about all of the school choice students that will be increasing our community's risk of COVID?" And the final public comment is Jamie Garvey, Southwick, Mass. She states, "I agree with the male who stated kindergarten not having to wear masks. My son has a hard time wearing one for a long time in a store, which we do not go out with my boys often. I have a son in preschool, sticking with the state guidelines where it's recommended, but not required, but teachers wear them all day. I also think it's hard for some adults to wear them during work for a full day. How is that going to be for a young child? I get where everyone is coming from, but for small children, this is a bit harder." And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, uh, last thing on the agenda tonight is committee discussion, does anybody have any old business? In the room, on the phone, anybody have any old business? Okay, new business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We have to roll call vote, uh, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria? Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes, as motion passes seven zero zero. Thank you all for your patience this evening and have a good night.